Okay, welcome everybody. Today is October 5th. This is our weekly Monday meeting. At this time, I would please ask everyone to rise to say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks Dave. Okay, at this time, is everybody good with the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, there is one matter that needs to be added. Indigent Director Jody Wise requested that an executive session be added for indigent, and I would recommend that we do that after Boise National Forest presentation.
So we'll see, like 11:45, 11:50?
Yeah, probably 11:45.
And that's 742061B?
D?
D? Okay, I need a motion to add this to the agenda and then approve.
I'll make a motion that we add, have an addition to the agenda for 11:45 meeting for indigent director.
On second. All in favor, please say aye. Motion carries. What's that?
Oh, I was just seeing if you already started your meeting.
We started. Thank you, Sherri, for doing that. Okay, we're gonna move on down to our agenda. Our first action item is approval of claim for additional power for the recycling center, and Scott came in last week and requested this after we paid bills, and he really needs it for them to start. So I said I would get it on the agenda today, and Doug said we could do it that way. I think it was $520? $520. So I need a motion so we can issue that check today and they can get going on the power for recycling.
I'll make a move. A motion to be approved, the claim for additional power for the recycling center.
Could you state the $520 in that motion?
For $520.
Thank you, sir. Move to second. All in favor, please say aye. All right, motion carries. Okay, the next item up is an action item. It's the meeting minutes of September 28th. Everybody good with those?
Mr. Chairman, I did receive corrections from Commissioner Moppa, and those corrections have been made. Those were the only corrections that were submitted to me.
Oh, and these are the things from the loggers. Okay, so I have a motion to approve the updated minutes of September 28th.
I'll move that we approve the meeting minutes of September 28th as amended.
I'll second that.
Move to second. All in favor, please say aye. All right, motion carries. And the next item on our agenda is also an action item. It's the signed janitorial services agreement for the county annex. And this was the 720 a month contract.
Actually, 2,000. Remember, Commissioners, you had requested five days a week.
2,000 a month?
That's correct. That was the bid that was submitted and approved, and this is just the agreement for the actual work.
Now, this does not include the McCall City Police, right?
That's correct.
This is just the... So that went up... That went up almost to $11,000. Okay, well, I'd indicate a motion to approve this agreement.
Motion that we approve the janitorial services agreement for the county annex.
Move to second. All in favor, please say aye. Can we hold time on this one?
Doug Andrews is gonna call in for the broadband tower grant. Is there a... Meeting whatever, if you can call into?
Oh, yes. I can send him an email. Thanks, sir.
Okay, our next action item is in about 10 minutes. EMT grant for Chief One. So you got 10 minutes if you need a break.
Sorry, Director, it's based on... Give me the coffee.
I have it. I printed it off.
All right. Did you get the EIN number on that one? Because I got one that has the EIN number on it. Because that's the one we need to... It has to have the EIN.
Oh.
I already put it on.
Okay. Fantastic.
And this is for the EMPG grant?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, we have the wrong...
Oh.
2020 EMT grant. It should be EMP, EMP.
EMP. And remind me... Oh, yeah, here it is. So we're gonna get 15262, and then we match that? This is for your salary?
For the EM logs.
Yeah. Want to make sure it's straight in my head. We're a little early yet. Well, while we're waiting for this to come on, are we... Did you do with the prophy fire declaration?
We're gonna wait until the end of this week because we have no weather coming in, and even though they've sort of laxed down and gone to type four teams, they're still keeping some heavy equipment on because of that. It's because if there's any anticipation because of no moisture or nothing coming in this week, just in case it ramps up a little bit so we don't have to re-implement them.
And that's for prophy, and then what about buck?
Same with buck.
Same with buck. So it's a four?
Yeah, they've gone from a type three to a type four, for fourteen. But they're still keeping heavy on, each of them heavy up and approved. So, just in case. I just don't want to have to take it off and then put it back on in the middle of the week if some wind event or something comes.
Where's most of this smoke coming from? California?
Still Oregon and California. It's just because of the way the high-pressure cell is going over us. It either comes on that side of the line or this side of the line, which is usually this side of the line.
Well, it's pretty good the other Sunday morning.
Mr. David, yeah, for real.
Yeah.
You're going all the way till we get snow. Thank you for that, Ron. It's our smoke season. Smoke season. It's our fifth season of the year. The prophy fire did make it into the Smith Ranch, but it's on the very north end of the Smith Ranch, so it's still quite a ways to make that confluence of the... Very intense.
You ever driven that Smith Creek road?
Yeah.
It's an interesting place.
Yeah, we did when we just preused it on the last summer first.
You doing it in a four-wheeler?
No, we just did it in a gene.
You could get through the post at the end there?
Interesting conversation. That came up as a... Why do we request that as a FERTA?
Yeah.
That was the original road, I think, before the road over Elk Creek Summit. That was the original road up through there.
Do you really want it as a FERTA? That was a question that came up.
Was it a FERTA or RS2477?
It's a FERTA request right now.
I thought, when we talked about it a couple of years ago, I thought it was an RS2477. It's an existing road that we had. I don't remember doing the FERTA on it.
There's a number on that. There's FERTA requests on it.
Does you remember? Remember when Gordon, we talked about that?
Mr. Chairman, I apologize. I don't recall. We can take a look at the prior meeting minutes to see if it was discussed in the commissioner meeting.
I'm not 100% sure, but I'm pretty sure it was a 2477, and that was the original road past Big Creek and on up to Elk Creek Summit. And I've been through it probably four or five times. For whether there's a lot of mines up there, and the McCray Mine, I think, is still... I don't know if it's still operable or not. That guy wanted access to it. Independence Mine, I think, is above Big Creek. I don't know if they accessed that up Smith Creek or not. I'm trying to remember. There's too many things.
That was on the list that we have from Woodbury, when he came in and gave us the list of the requests we had out there.
Yeah. So it's never been approved, or we just requested it?
I don't think it's been approved, no.
There is a bunch of them that haven't been approved that we're gonna be discussing on Wednesday with our road approved.
Well, I think it's on the Schedule A for Jeff, too.
Jeff's not decided about that one?
No, there's some work to be done on it. Keep it, keep it, and it was kinda... Gosh darn, I wish I could remember all that. Anyway, we'll talk about it then, I guess, or whenever. If something happens on the Elk Creek Summit Road down into Big Creek, that's the only other way out of there.
So did you get my email on the IHS All-Hazard Emergency Meeting for the 19th?
I did. We were talking about that, too, Bill.
We haven't said it yet, but I'll make sure that we let you know when we do say.
I did receive it.
You know, an additional emergency route. But one of the things we were talking about, Will, is not...
I was... My apologies.
I mean, certainly, anything but high clearance.
My apologies, chief.
You know, I've driven up it, turned around, and came back down to my truck.
They approved that.
And then the other part of it was that you've got the profile road and the Elk Creek road coming in and out of Big Creek, so there are two routes already.
Sign that, please, that you...
Okay.
One thing real quick that is on the agenda. We are now in unified command with Central District Health and Idaho's Emergency Management as a county to the Emergency Management Office. So all four counties that are in the Central District Health are in unified command for collaboration cell for the ever-increasing rise of numbers of...
Yeah, they keep giving us...
Right now, unified command.
Thanks, Juan. It seemed to me like there was... The other issue with Smith Creek is down at the bottom is where everybody parks to go hunting in the wilderness.
Yeah, that's the main trailhead right there.
And if we lose Smith Creek, they would take that bridge out, and they would not be able to park there. Seemed to me like something like that.
Well, I think the trailhead is above there.
It comes now... Well, come this way from Big Creek and down to Smith Creek, and you gotta cross the bridge, and then you got a big parking lot there. And it's, I mean, it's huge for a lot of hunters. The concern was if we lose Smith Creek, they would take that bridge. I'm trying to remember it all.
Sorry, it seems crazy, because that's the main access for Big Creek.
Yeah.
Yeah, like you said, going into all of the different trails of Fayetteville from there. So that's hunters, hikers, fishermen.
So if we gave that up, would we lose that parking lot?
I would doubt it. I mean, that's a force that was working on it. Whether or not, it's a short, yeah, short little piece of the road that goes off the end of the Big Creek Road down there, like from the end of strip down.
Right, yeah. It's one of the questions we gotta ask, though. Okay, Juan, now we can go on to our next action item, which is to sign the 2020 EMP grant. We had one.
Okay, so this is the 2020 sub-recipient agreement between FEMA, the state, and the county. The grant is for $30,524.2. This is a 50/50 grant, so what that means is there is a cost share involved, which is 50%. So the total amount of grant that we received in the month of September of 2021 would be $15,262.1. And what I'm asking for today is, this grant period's from October 1st, 2009 to September 30th, 2020. What I'm asking for is approval, and then we need a signature from the chairman, who I have enlisted as our authorized sub-recipient official.
And is this the grant that helps pay wages, or what is this grant used for?
This, this grant's used... The EMPG grant is specific to the Emergency Management Office, so that's any wages or anything I buy, like a computer or whatever, comes out of that fund.
So do we need to put the match up on that?
Yes.
We do.
We budgeted for that.
We budgeted.
That was $15,000 was the match?
Everybody understand?
Absolutely.
So I take a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion that we approve the 2020 EMP grant in the amount of 15,000, with a match amount of $15,262.1.
Move to second. All in favor, please say aye. All right, motion carries.
So Juan said something that you need Mary's help writing, or is that something you do?
That's... I'm responsible for two grants. One of them is the EMPG, and one of them is the SHSP, which is equipment grant. That's 100%, no match. Those are the two I'm responsible as an EMP.
Do you want to tell these?
I do.
While you're here, why don't we add on the all-hazard mitigation line?
Once, once the director...
We have a meeting set up on... We're trying to get on the agenda on the 19th. That was one question I just had for the clerk to go over and review, and then you'll get the draft hopefully this next week to review prior to the meeting. And then it's an approval process, just, and then it should be good. Right now, they're working on a couple of things that, when it came back from FEMA, but that was a state and rider issue. It wasn't any more information needed from us. It was just some...
And this is good for five years?
Five years.
Five years.
Yeah.
And we have to do it all over again, but now we'll have a document that makes it...
Right, and we're gonna be doing it differently. So every year, we're gonna meet once or twice a year as a subcommittee group, and we're gonna do the updates of what happened that year so that at the end of the year, we're not doing all of them.
Good idea.
And the state's gonna be able to help us do that, so we won't have, we shouldn't have to contract out anymore and have this fiasco that we have this time.
Well, it was kind of a fiasco, and it took a while to get there, but I'm glad you're just about done with it.
Just about got it. And we do have the fire component in this one, so that's good because that'll release some other funding for interior work for mitigation.
Yep, start on the county one.
And then we have to do the emergency operating plan.
But that's fairly simple, isn't it?
Well, it hasn't been updated since 2010, so...
So you just put new names in, people contacts?
Yeah, and there's some organizational chart stuff that needs to be revamped because we don't operate that way. So my goal with that EOP is to make sure that it's something, because right now, nobody uses it. I've never used it in the 24 years of being a firefighter because I don't need it, but I'm hoping that it's a document that we'll at least look at and see every time we have a multi-agency incident.
Juan, on a different subject, have you guys talked with Doug about getting together the chiefs on this new study?
That's on schedule for the...
On the 19th as well.
19th as well, okay. Good. Here it is. You need it back?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you for your work.
Thanks, Juan.
Hey Doug, when we said the commissioner meetings, did we recognize that next Monday is federal holiday? So we're having it on the 13th?
We'll be meeting on Tuesday.
I'm glad you brought that up, because I'd have been here probably next Monday.
I started looking at my appointment scheduling. I went, oh, darn it, gotta change that.
David, really quick on that website. How close are we to getting the property taxes on that website? Are we pretty close?
Well, now we're ready to have a... We wanted to do that big time, but it does. Rid of our remote access for title companies, which is a significant threat.
Oh.
That's the way Bingham County got...
Right, right.
Anyways, we've been working to get most of those things that they needed remote access to the... Brantin, the pass, but I'm sure you can trigger it onto offsite with the website. With the patents, the way that the program calculates taxes, I don't know if we're gonna be able to replicate what they get currently for the website. We can prevent, we can provide all the information outside of, I think, interest or... I'm gonna get the wrong term here, but the actual, when the title companies come in, and they look at it, they're like, they want to know the interest at that moment in time. Interest due maybe on the property.
Interest and penalty, probably.
Something like that, but that component is available right now to the title companies. But in the work we've been doing to put it online on the website, so at this point, working with the state, we haven't been able to recreate that much component. And it sounds like Canyon County had a similar problem. So that's a long way of saying I'm not sure. I thought we were right there to be able to get it done, and then we ran into the last part. I mean, there's ways around it. If you could convince the title companies that, or not convince them, but ask them to do something, and I don't think the treasurer would want this, but call in to get that latest greatest information instead of getting it immediately on the website, then you could probably go immediately and have the bulk of the tax information, right? Available online. And we can still do that.
So if it's just, just the interest and penalty, then they can call in to see what that is, but the rest of it you could put on?
Yeah, that's my... Yeah, but I don't think, once again, the treasurer might not want that at all, but they'd probably think that would drive more traffic, more calls, you know? And maybe the title companies might... This is speculative on my part. Might look at it as slowing that down in their process. I don't know. We haven't revisited that quite yet.
Well, as long as they can get the taxes paid the previous year, I don't know what the issue is other than the interest and penalty if you don't pay them, but...
But I know at this point, we can get what the public would, most of what the public might be interested in in general. I mean, even if this, this came up some years ago with other counties around the country when you're moving in the area, like interested to know what the taxes are in the area you're moving in. That we can probably do almost certainly right away. We're there. We built the server components. We bought the little extra bit of software that Karen needed to do that portion of it. So I think we're right there with that, there being weeks, you know? The other part, where we get rid of that and the title companies just go to the website, that's more of... Right now, we're at a stinging point, you know? We got the stuff we needed from the state, but then we didn't realize that the way that those taxes are calculated with the program does it is, it's pretty unique. It's not a typical kind of thing that you would see, you know, that you could calculate very easily. It's, there's some rounding involved. It depends on when the date, the date that that value's requested, you know?
Don't count on agents to be able to do anything.
Yeah, and so you'd have to do it programmatically. You couldn't, you'd have to do it in a way where you, hey, is it before the state or after the state? Is it this amount? And you would think it would be, this is, I'm probably gonna get this wrong, you'd think it would be, you know...
Pretty straightforward.
Above, round up, you know, below, round down. But it's not quite that way. There's some odd and even values that come into play. So, you know, if you're really, like, if you're just taking a calculator, calculating interest, it's not quite like that. So we ran into that little snag there. The workarounds are, what we just talked about, you've got to call in to get that information, change the process. A lot of times, changing the process is hard for people, but that's a solution for sure. Is say, hey, we've done this in the winter pass. And it's, it's a, you know, a trade-off on how we use our security and whether that's, you know, important enough to shut down that vector for that, you know, that...
Well, I think it is because they're already trying to do that in other counties, correct?
They are, but I mean, does it put too much, it's always like, you know, does it put too much burden on the treasurer's office? Or are the title companies, you know, does it break their business in some way, you know? I'm not their, you know, title person.
I don't think so. I know the issue with them right now is these park models down in leisure time converting back to a license. And there's some concern about those people, when they bought it, paid sales tax on it, and then it converted over to personal property, so now they're paying taxes on it. When they sell it, they're not able to transfer the fact that they had paid the sales tax on that. And the state doesn't really know what they're doing either, as far as do we still collect sales tax when they sell again and again?
It may just be a discussion between commissioners, the treasurer, the title companies on how to handle that. I mean, that would be the simplest way. If you can generate that tax information with, you know, some amount of interest and all that stuff, but not the on-the-fly, real-time what it is at that moment, which is, I think, what they're accessing now.
Do you know, does the treasurer get a lot of calls? I mean, what, people requesting how much taxes on a piece of...
I don't know that we actually got a number on that. We're looking at it more or not from a volume and use standpoint, more from a cyber standpoint.
Right, right. Well, I can ask, I'll ask.
I mean, you know my sense on cyber. I mean, I think it's worth just hiring a person to answer calls.
Absolutely.
To tell you what your interest is, as opposed to, that's a big enough threat.
Yeah, and I don't think there's that much demand that that could be done on the phone.
I'll find out. I can find out more information about the number of, the volume of calls for that type of thing. I know it's, it's the title companies that we're talking about in particular. So it's three or four, whatever, local ones here. And at that moment, whatever that, you know, once again, I don't know if I'm gonna say it wrong, but whatever that value they need at that moment is what they're able to look up on their own right now. And if we, that's the last component to get rid of that remote access. If they, if, right now, if we cut that off, they wouldn't have that ability. They'd have to call in to get, they still have the ability, but it would change. They'd have to call in to get that.
Well, and do they, do they know the issue? Would they be willing to change some of their programs so they could get it?
Well, they've been pretty flexible, but some of the other things, because it's changed before, they would come in and do, use our assessment software, sort of a version of it, to get information. And now we've been able to update that information online on the website, and they were transitioned to that, to the parcel here, kind of way of looking at things, which has the same information that, as the little program they used to log into before. So they were, they were good with that. They're good with the title documents online, the way the bureau's office is providing now. Typically, they know the instrument number, so that it's a little bit slow in the search for that, using it. If you're searching by my name through that online portal, it's slow. End of the world, so I'm not sure, but we can speed that up. But the title companies, when I talk to at least Karen, they're, if they have the instrument number, and they can look it up, that's all they need, so they're okay with that. So we've gotten rid of that component. We've gotten rid of the assessment component. And then the other stuff is available, but it's just the tax component.
I just wonder how many public information requests we've dropped over the last few years because it's all online. I think that saved a great deal of stress as far as people here having to find that information. Now they can just direct into it. I think that saved a lot of time for our folks.
They have it available online, definitely, for the, outside of the title companies, it definitely helped.
Oh, yeah.
And we can still go forward with that without that one little real-time component, you know?
And I would think if it's just a penalty and interest question, they could call in for that. They're getting the taxes, right? So they just have to call in on that.
Yeah, and that, yeah, I would think that would be reasonable. I don't, once again, I don't know the treasurer's take on that and the feelings of how much the volume is for the title companies.
Well, if you need help with that, I can talk to them, too, and see how they feel about it. They're all really, especially the realtors, they're really excited about being able to get online and get everything they need.
Oh, yeah.
And that has saved a ton, I'm telling you.
Maybe we'll approach that first from that angle, because we've talked to them before about the... Very reasonable understanding of the risks of the county. Maybe that'll be the first approach, is go just to talk to them and ask how they feel about it. I don't know that we've asked that question really, it's like, would you be okay? The other part of that is the treasurer's office, you know, that's something they're offering to those folks.
Well, I went through a search down in Boise County on a piece of property down there that they say I own that I don't know if I own or not. And it took two hours just for it to come up on a map on their website. I mean, it was like, it is monotonous going through it.
Yeah, some of those, it's, it's, it does all the big benefits to it.
Oh, I think there's huge. Yeah. Okay, we're gonna move on to our next agenda item, which is a discussion on holding a joint city council commissioner meeting to discuss a joint comprehensive planning on the Idaho Department of Land and Valley County. You're, you're running this one?
I'll put that on there just for a conversation. So David has been talking in, like, physical a little bit, and we're wondering just what is the timing that we might be able to have a joint meeting? And what would be the outcome and the purpose so we can start designing, you know, kind of what that would look like? Andrew Minzert sent us all an email last week on, on, you know, trying to do some zoning or something like that. Had a lot of conversations since then with others, and it's, it's really a difficult conversation, but it's not only a time. We just, we need to put something on the agenda. conversation, but it's a moment in time, we just, we need to put something on the agenda and discuss what our opportunities are and what we think that, you know, what is the timing that we should do or put in place in order to try and move forward with this?
Well, and Dave, your concern too was recreational access to that ground, right?
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
So we would probably ask for some kind of an easement or dedicated something or other from the state. The concern I have is the state pretty much does what they want to do.
I think, yeah, the bigger picture was is that 5,200 acres or 5,300 acres of that is in the impact area. So we have an interest as well as the county in that smaller piece of property around the lake that's in the impact zone. And I think that was more the discussion, is like, starting it with the, you know, micro picture of the area around the lake and then expanding it out to what do we or what can we do as a unified body of governments here in Valley County do to influence or, you know, work with the land board as they're making their decisions that we're going to see in December?
So you kind of envision between us and the city council, we come up with, this is what we'd like to see on these different pieces or parcels? And hopefully they'll take it into consideration? Is that kind of the goal?
I, I wouldn't say that there's necessarily a defined goal at this point. You know, I've talked to the city councilmen and folks, and I've talked to several other groups, and I think that the bigger picture is that we probably need to have a, you know, public workshop that includes the city council because it, it directly affects city hall as well as the county because it will affect us as well. And start looking at what, you know, options are there, where are our concerns about this, you know, update that's going to be coming out from the land board? And then, you know, who do we need to reach out to as this is progressing now? So I would recommend, and, you know, I talked to Mike a little bit, it's because everything is okay, we don't know where they stand on the proposed land exchange at this point. We don't know if Trident is going to be presenting to them at the October meeting, is that, you know, we wait until after the land board meeting in October and see what they discuss. I don't even know if this is on their agenda yet, I have not seen the land board's agenda for the October meeting.
And my concern is that they're supposed to have some recommendations by December.
Right.
So we're really such a small time window here, and I think a joint statement from the governmental bodies in this area is why they don't rely this way.
I do agree with you.
Yeah.
But I think it needs to be fairly specific. One of the concerns I had, and I don't know, maybe I'm off on this, but does McCall have enough sewer and water?
No, they do not.
To go around? So there's, there's some issues there that you can have a wait list, but can you provide that infrastructure?
They're doing a, sort of, a study on Pay Lake Sewer right now, just to see what their needs are, what their, what do you, uh, future needs is going to be, and, you know, I think it was sort of a capacity study at this point to see where they are. I don't know when that's coming out, but the city's, you know, certainly very interested in this because, yes, it does affect them as far as the infrastructure goes.
Sure.
You know, and then there will be planning and zoning issues that evolve out of this if a land exchange were to go through, or if they decide to put this up for competitive auction at, at some point in the future. But I think that, you know, my point was is we just don't know where the land board is. I've had meetings with the group Pila this week, and I think that, you know, everybody's kind of waiting to see what the, the land board is going to be in October, just because it's so vague right now.
Do you know when that meeting is?
It's the third, uh, the 20th, I think is what the date is, it's right around there. Yeah, the third, Thursday.
22nd?
So what about though? So everybody's waiting to see what happens, but then we only have maybe six weeks in order to.
What, what action item are we looking forward to come out of this meeting, though, is the question, because we don't have any information, we don't really have any ability to affect what the land board's going to do, other than to ask them, consider our thoughts. So I think that, you know, in the meantime, we can get together and put together a letter to send to the land board that addresses our concerns about this as it moves forward, which is the management plan or the recommendation that will be coming out. And the city, I think, is planning on doing the same thing. And so, you know, the idea was is that there are multiple groups right now that are working towards, you know, a, a particular goal, which is to influence the way that this goes down, to, you know, potentially limit the ability for the state to do the exchange, and then to look at how can we preserve some of that land for access, recreation, keep it within the endowment land trust so that it's productive, giving back something. I mean, there's, there's more going on on endowment lands around here than just logging. It's, you know, right now, I'd say one of the larger things that's happening is rock extraction, so there's a lot of rock extraction, boulder removal, you know, sales that are going on, grazing, cheap grazing is still going on, you know, in earnest on state lands.
Dave, would it be, just an idea that came in my little brain, would it be better if we all got together, and I don't know, quite sure how we do this, it's got to be in a public forum, so the public can be here? If we just came out and all of a sudden said, we don't want you to exchange that land, we would rather keep it, you guys keep it as an endowment land forever?
I don't think that that would be, you know, I mean, when you look at like the common procedures and the way that people like to, agencies like to receive comments is, they want to see what are our recommendations, not just that we're opposed to, you know, taking this out of the public trust, but that we have a specific goal moving forward, whether it's, you know, county parks around the east side, management, some kind of campground on by the state parks, you know, a land exchange purchase, whatever it is. You know, we've been looking at a variety of different ways that we could come up with some funding if that 5,500 acres comes up for sale, which is very possible that that will be the recommendation. I don't think that IDL can take a recommendation for a 28,000 acre land exchange. I mean, that would effectively cut out 35% or something of the land that the IDL, IDL office here in McCall manages. So I don't think that they're going to take that as a recommendation, but I do think that there's going to be some changes in certainly the areas around Pay Lake to start with.
And my thought is that we get together and identify what our concerns would be. I have a great concern for the ITD corridor, all the way from Eagle up here. You know, if you are going to allow that type of growth and you're going to sell this ground that's around and allow development on it, how are we going to manage, what is your long-term plan for 55? You know, bringing up the sewer and the water issues, bringing up, you know, what is it that we have that are our concerns with this? And then thinking and think that through before they decide, well, we're going to sell this, you know? And, and I know that some of their, I've talked to their attorneys, and the gentleman that is advising the board is saying it'll probably never be a land exchange, it will be an auction. And I mean, that was just, it will be an auction. So if we have any influence on how are you going to mitigate these concerns, that makes them think maybe a little bit more about what they're doing to this area. How are you going to mitigate our recreation access? You know, this is a huge economic driver for our snowmobile program, for our recreation trails and all of those types of things. But we also need to have some kind of a task force in place to identify what are those recreation trails that we need? What are those pathways?
I would say that the bigger picture, yeah, the bigger picture is like, what do we want to see happen to the land itself? The recreation and the other access ideas, I think, will be coming into play, but like the bigger picture right now is what do we want to see happen? What kind of development, what level of development are we comfortable with around Pay Lake to begin with? That's the first piece that I think we need to identify. And I, I think we're agreeing that we need to get together, I think that what we're disagreeing on is basically like the timing on it, is, you know, is it before the land board meeting? So we can take some recommendations to the land board, or is it after the land boarding or the, when we maybe have a little better idea and picture of what their proposal is shaping out to be?
I'm just saying, let's get it on the calendar now, and it can be after the land board meeting so that we have that knowledge. But if we wait until then and then put a meeting, we're still looking at another two or three weeks.
Yeah, no, and I was going to say, like, I think timing on this would be like in the third week of October, somewhere in that range, fourth week, or, excuse me, first week of November.
Yeah.
So do you guys want to do like an evening meeting so that everybody can come?
I think that that would be.
And probably have it up in McCall somewhere, if we can find a venue to have it.
I think it would make more sense to do something like that.
And Doug, that would have to be advertised, right, as a public meeting and all that, correct?
Correct. See, McCall as well as our office would have to notice it as a, a joint public meeting.
And I think that's a great way to go, because we're going to get lots of comments. Somebody's going to have to put all this kind of together into a document, you know, like, if they're going to come in and say they want to develop everything on the lake shore and auction it off, that's fine and dandy, but they got to know that McCall doesn't have the capacity to take those.
Right.
Those are the things that nobody knows about, other than McCall on this case, but kind of, this is, this is what happens, this is what's going to happen if you guys do this, kind of the scenario.
I think if we did it like at the commons, at the high school commons, so that we can spread enough for all of our, our staff to be there and us to be there, and then just do the rest of it on a Zoom. People jump on, you know, it may not be open to public or.
You're expecting a pretty large crowd.
That, that was, that turnout, or excuse me, the, the turnout would be large, and the commons, I'd be willing to bet even with really appropriate social distancing, I bet we could still easily accommodate like 50 or 60 people.
Okay.
It's huge.
Maybe we have the first, you know, however many we can get in there and do it. So then, even in the high school gym, the high school gym might be a better.
The commons isn't more comfortable, they have the tables and all that. I mean, we get into like, you know, cleaning issues afterwards, but that's a good area.
Well, then why don't you guys get with the city and see when they can do it? I think it's important that, what are your ideas, their ideas of having this meeting? Yeah, we want to have this meeting too, and then we can invite all the other groups as well, but you guys want to coordinate that, or do you want me to coordinate that?
I'm happy to reach out to him, I've been, you know, like I said, I've been talking to one of the councilmen and some of the other groups involved.
And then Doug, we need what, a week to advertise it, or two?
I mean, for code, we need five days.
Five days, so pick a date and, you know, we can get it in the paper and we'll have the meeting, see where it goes.
Oh, yeah, I'll email the city folks today and see what dates work for them.
And I have a call in doing that also, so I'll back off that call. And I was going to see if there was a time available, so.
Well, and I think it's really important that we do this in the public setting, everybody's.
Absolutely.
If you start going in individually and trying to do stuff, you're going to get yourself in trouble.
As I, as I was going to say, as I've been having these meetings with different entities that are interested in the issue right now, everybody's working towards a similar goal, and everybody is also, they're, they're, you know, as I've been involved with it from both the Simis side and the county side, they're really excited that the county wants to be a part of this discussion.
And I think a joint letter then signed off by the other groups actually holds a lot of sway versus us joining something else. I think a governmental letter.
I agree.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Has a lot.
That would be the letter that went to the land board.
Absolutely.
Are, are anybody going to try and make the land board meeting on the 22nd or whatever it is?
I was going to go down for that.
Okay, if you can't, let me know.
I, I was going to say too, if you can't, can we all, can we all be in that same meeting?
You can, but you just can't sit next to each other, you're going to have to spread out. So we're not having any cohe, what is, what is the word? So do you want to add something to this?
Conflict of interest.
Conflict of interest.
I was just going to recommend that you might have a, a meeting, just the board of county commissioners, card to that 20th, October 20th date, and then have a spokesman at that land board meeting, like you were just talking about, because the state can do less than legal subdivisions, so it might be better to actually have them, have someone else develop it in, in smaller pieces, because you don't want the state doing that. But you might want to prioritize what you, I mean, worst-case scenarios, we need access through this stuff. So you might have a meeting to give your spokesperson something to say at the October 20th meeting and give them, the land board a head up that you're going to be meeting with the city of McCall and other agencies.
Yeah, it's kind of like, we all need to kind of throw our ideas on each of us and then put all those ideas together.
For a spokesperson, the 20th, just the county commissioners, and say, this is what the county is going to be doing, just to give them a heads up what you're doing.
How's our agenda looking for next week? Do we have, look up 45-minute chunk of time in there, Doug?
Next week's mail thing.
We would have, commissioners, we would have 1:30 to 2 o'clock. There's a public hearing scheduled for 2 o'clock, that's going to be the entire day.
That meeting's on the 20th, it's Tuesday, not Thursday.
Yeah, it's a Tuesday. What's the public hearing on, Doug?
Uh, approval of CUP 20-18, Burns RV side, and then a denial of CUP 2020, the gathering place.
Yeah, that will be out, so that'll give us a half an hour, would that be enough time?
To put together talking points?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would think so.
We could do a, a pre-talking point list.
And give direction.
Right.
Yeah, that gives us a week to, what we need.
Okay, so Doug, you add that to the agenda?
That's been done, Mr. Chairman.
Anything else on this? Not, we'll move on to our next agenda item, which is decision, or discussion, excuse me, on the broadband power grant? See if you can get Andrew on the line. Sherry, was this the CARES funding you were talking about?
It, it, well, yes and no, it is a portion of that. Eric Forge has been the one that's leading all of the conversation about that. And David's been actively engaged, I don't know what the name of the broadband task force is, if there is one, but Mary's been engaged, Dave Simmons, Chris Curtin, there's a whole group of those guys that are called techie guys that know what the heck this is all about.
We looked at this, we started that, we started a while back, before, I don't know, it was before March, I think, or something.
Yeah, it was right, right in there.
Right in there, it's down. I don't know the name of the funding though, but.
So I'm just, I am trying to do whatever we can to get broadband in any capacity, anywhere we can get it. And there is funding capabilities because of the COVID and everybody going to.
David, I'm kind of confused. If you build a, a tower and you bring a signal in, how does that increase your broadband speed?
In that task force, or, you know, the, the fiber group, we talked about fiber running, you know, parts in south of the valley, and then, you know, providing, kind of expanding maybe on what McCall's doing.
Welcome to the website. Interview.
Every time I just brainstorm, I mean, we've been with the idea of going down about, we didn't come up with the idea, it's an existing idea, maybe rediscovered it, about some of these areas that we might not reach quickly with fiber, providing.
Joining the meeting.
The way that that helps is, I mean, if you're going out to someplace, let's say, uh.
David, you know what, you need to hop on here now, so, Andrew.
If you're going out someplace that's, you know, further out, let's say it's, oh, I don't know, towards Boulder Creek or Boulder Reservoir or something like that, and you might not get fiber out there anytime soon, if you can shoot wireless to that, you're in, increasing the availability of higher-speed connectivity to that, to those people that live in that area. So it improves it in the sense that they have access to it, right? It might not be the, what we're getting here at the county facility, actually, we're running that today, but it's something better than what they might experience at where they live out in their carefree or jug mountain estates or out in that kind of area. So the idea was brought up that, you know, we would take county areas, county facilities, maybe, Lake Forest, you know, the tower on EOC, doesn't look like we could do it now, but the, the tower on No Business, and allow the private sector to utilize that space to help out the public with their connectivity.
So there are areas between Donlin and Cascade and areas south of Cascade that have what's called a 10/1 speed, so 10 down, 1 up, I mean, that's, that's not even able to barely get on the internet. So we have a lot of kids that are at homeschool, we have people trying to work from home, remote access, that we are not able to provide enough broadband in these areas of the county. And so I'm just looking for any, any opportunity to.
So then your focus on this is more building towers to get the Wi-Fi there instead of actually putting in fiber optics?
Correct.
Yeah.
Because they're not gonna get there anytime soon.
Sorry to interrupt, but yeah, putting infrastructure in place, you know, tower location that somebody might take advantage of to, right? Like wilderness, or wilderness wireless. Uh, I still can't say that fast, but someone like that could come in and say, hey, we could use that for a nominal or maybe subsidized, you know, we're already subsidizing actually for building, uh, a facility that they could utilize. That's where that, all this discussion comes from.
Maybe Patty, you can answer this one, but don't you have to set it up so that it's a competitive? That, I mean, anybody could come in and put in anything on a tower if they wanted.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I just thought that name. I'm not saying we're, we're doing business with anybody. Yes, something like that would definitely.
But like in, in the business, and correct me if I'm wrong, but if we do that, then it changes our lease with Forest Service, correct? And they want, usually want more money when that's the case. My concern is we're, we shouldn't have to subsidize private industries. They want to come in and do it, they've got to pay the cost, all the cost. Does that make sense?
It, it does, and that's a discussion that's outside of my kind of.
Right.
Well, you know, it's.
I think, I remember this conversation before and it was basically, we just needed to get touch reports there to find out what that amount is. Cross it out to whoever, private entity that was interested in doing it and see if they're willing to pay that much more. Because again, we're, I don't, I don't think we should be responsible for that.
Sure. Do you want to come up here, sure?
And Scott was gonna go up last weekend also and look at the facility itself and see what's up.
Right, and, uh, so anybody new going up there, especially a commercial, then they need to check with the Forest Service, which we've already reached out to. And I did provide you the name of the lady, right, that was looking into costs, but there's also if they're needing to build a, put another tower or a building or whatever. That's a whole nother story that they would have to work with the Forest Service on, uh, and, and there'd be some studies and because there had been commercial on there before, she said that if it was on our tower in our building, it wouldn't probably take as much. But if it has to be independent, then there would be more they would have to do on that. Do you want to look at that whole process that we had to go through to get on there? I mean, that's available. I don't know if the clerk's office has copies of all that.
I think at that point, that it takes out of our hands and it's the entity who is interested in that is, they can approach the Forest Service for a new facility up there. Because we're, we're not asking for a new facility. We don't need one. But.
And our tower.
I think that there is still potentially, if I'm not wrong, um, the ability to put more hardware on the system that's up there. That would be a co-op kind of situation.
We would have to look at that and talk with our, um, with our, um, radio maintenance person. At one time he didn't recommend that we, you know, if we need to expand, but since I'm not into that technical portion of it, we might have to look.
I think concerns we've heard in the past were that somebody potentially from a private industry could be accessing the building where we have material or hardware that runs our EMS.
Yeah, it would just, it would be more of a, you know, a trust thing, but would we want to, the vulnerability, I don't know. That would be.
And that's where we're trying to get, I'm trying to mitigate our concern as a county, but, so this is the way I look at it. Valley County provides certain services to our tax base. And I think that broadband should be considered critical infrastructure. And as we move forward, we need to look at that as critical infrastructure. So right now, we don't have the ability to provide this with the CARES funding, but if we don't use them, it's gonna go back to the treasury and they will re-disseminate those funds to other counties that might be able to. So the state's gonna use those funds or we're gonna use those funds. So I'm looking at it, how, how can we, for the success of Valley County moving forward, use those funds? Instead of having to send them back. So if it's a tower and we have to be over the Forest Service and get something done quickly, that's great. I mean, if there is any other place that we could provide the opportunity for commercial business to do this in the future, I think it's something we should investigate. Just because I do believe that we have to provide in going forward, I mean, we're not a city, we don't provide sewer and water. But we are a county and there are certain things that we should be looking toward in the future as making part of our plan for the residents here. And broadband is a huge critical infrastructure need now, most particularly with all of the remote learning and kids trying to learn online. Colleges up here now and, um, BSU is in the area teaching online classes. These are things that we can provide. And if there's funding revenue that we let go, I think that that's bad on us. So I'm just trying to figure out what can we do? What are the opportunities?
Yeah, well, the lady hasn't gotten back with, I, was she gonna get back with you, David?
I haven't talked to her yet, but I kind of.
But she was looking into it as far as. Yeah, and I know, I'm in that area where have very little, you know.
Gold does is terrible down there.
And, and on, yeah, and south of that, and I know that, I know I would benefit from it. And my grandkids have come up and like on this weekend and using, you know, trying to get their schoolwork done too. I understand that perfectly, but I just want to make sure we're following our guidelines. And our, you know, it is being looked into on the Forest Service end already. And, um, but I think we also need to talk with our legal counsel too on, as well, but. But if they're gonna, if they had to build something, I think that would be a long.
That could be two years at least.
Yeah, it would be. So.
It would be a full blown.
We hear stories about the five G, especially in the bigger cities, we don't have it here, but they put them on power poles and under manholes and maybe that's something we need to think about is we could be a matching source of income for those kind of localized towers or localized areas and use the CARES Act for that. But there's some gray area here because we're competing against, you know, Verizon and AT&amp;T and all that stuff. This is where they make their money, so there, there may be some repercussions coming back on.
So we're being a partner with them. We're not competing against them because that would be, they would be the ones providing the access point. So private industry. So what the CARES Act was able to do in McCall was provide seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Where they're, they have a very specific project with Sparklight. And so they're gonna be the ones that are gonna be carrying it on. We just wrote the grant, it's, I think it was Valley County that actually received it. Or was it the City of McCall? I can't remember which one. We didn't.
We did not receive that. No, that was Drake. That was through the City of McCall.
Yeah. But a governmental agency partnered with private industry to create this because they have the funding mechanism to do it. And that's what I think we need to look at in the future. How can we be a partner to private industry? Or is there a way to do that to help push the broadband issue? So.
So let me ask you this, because I just don't know. I'm not smart enough about that stuff. If Midas Gold puts a cell phone tower out in Little Valley, which is apparently part of that plan, is that gonna increase the broadband out there or is it?
Not if it's just a cell.
It's just a cell. That's what I'm, we're confused. How does a tower improve your broadband? Well, you know, pipe coming in is still the same size.
Yeah. As I say, that, I guess, what I know of it, and David's way more qualified to explain this, but like, you know, we switched over to wilderness wireless because we didn't have good connectivity through Frontier. And it comes in as a radio signal from Brundage or No Business. So what they're doing, and they used to have one on Tamarack when they first started.
And on No Business, they were on, uh, the prior incarnation of these guys, uh, WorldCom was on our tower. Um, so they had a little bit more coverage because, uh, we talked about this before, you know that nub up on No Business? Where our tower's right here, they're over here. So they're kind of.
They got a shadow.
Yeah, they got a shadow where they can't hit some additional customers. And when we talked about this, the original plan was, what is the county's role in broadband? Because it's difficult, like Sherry said. We don't have a bunch of customers that we can hook up with like rapid, pretty quickly with like a, you know, mile, five or whatever. We got three hundred and sixty square miles that we're trying to deal with. So how do you provide, um, for the idea that you want to improve broadband in the community? And the quickest, easiest way is to use wireless technology to augment what fiber you have in place. And that logically leads to, you know, where you locate that stuff and can be partnered with the private sector to give them access to your existing location, or in this case, what we're talking about is maybe building a tower or box or something like that, that somebody could lease or use or something like that. Um, but wireless, you know, wireless is, you need a line of sight to, to shoot it down and to Dave's house or any other house, so. In general, the plan, what the idea of the fiber group was, how can you help out as many people as possible, increase their level of connectivity and speed at which they're able to do things on the internet?
If I'm not mistaken, there aren't any other providers right now in Valley County that are offering the wireless or radio signal, um, internet services. There's HughesNet, which is satellite based.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Um, there's, you know, the potential for the, um, I'm blanking on the name, Starlink. Is that the new system, the satellite system that's forthcoming?
Yeah.
They're testing in Valley County right now.
I forget too. This, this, some other people, this may open up some other competition.
Right, and that would be great, but I, I, I think what, what I'm getting at is there's nobody else right now that's asking us for that opportunity. I don't think there's anybody else that's providing that service in this part of Idaho.
Yeah, and, and, and they didn't ask. We reached out to them, really, just, you know, I mean, out of the task force, you know, uh, in one of those meetings, I said, I, you know, reach out to whoever could provide wireless to see if that was something they wanted, and wilderness wireless responded and was really, uh, great, you know, and explaining some things, because they're the experts on that. And, uh, their interest was definitely right off the bat. We talked about Lake Fork and the tower here, which should have less conflict. They were interested uh, in the tower here for sure. It provides some additional, um, access, uh, to around Cascade. But the big one that came away was No Business. Um, he thought right off the bat, that would be the bang for the buck to get something done quickly. That's where that whole discussion started, so. And yeah, Commissioner Bing says, uh, nobody's coming to us and saying, hey, we want to do, you know, there's not a lot of wireless providers out there based on, you know, just the population.
Kind of a sidebar, but is it possible? I mean, I know in like Midwest, for instance, they're doing the silo. We talked about that in one of the broadband meetings earlier, I think two years ago. They're doing a silo-based, um, radio system. It's a short range, but it's, the idea is putting more of those out there throughout the communities and getting more connectivity through that system. Is that something that we could look at as far as?
Are you talking about like different radio towers throughout the, it, it's possible. I mean, this was all pretty new, you know, come February, March or whatever, and we're in September, October now. So it's all pretty new of a discussion with this, that component or whatever, definitely.
Is that something you could put on like a cell tower though? I'm thinking about the new cell tower and two new cell towers in McCall and there's one in Donlin. There's one up, I believe.
Yeah, I don't see why I'm not, but I'd have to double check with, um, the experts really to see if that was.
Well, wouldn't that be up to whoever owns the tower?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, whoever has the lease. I think IDL has the lease on most of those towers.
Yeah, and you know.
I don't think it would even be IDL. It'd be like whoever, American Tower, whoever put the tower.
And I could reach out to the folks, I mean, I could, you know, to like wilderness wireless and see what they think about something like that, but, you know, and not being a wireless radio expert. Just from my experience, yeah, from my experience, you, you want that as, you know, the greatest, um, you know, just think about it, you know, if you're up trying to identify things, would you want a cell tower that was fifty, sixty feet? Uh, how far could you really go without, um, coming into hitting some trees or buildings or whatever?
Six thousand feet.
Or as opposed to, yeah, exactly, coming down like this at an angle like this to hit. And we did map out some of this. I asked Kara to, to create a coverage map and we provided that as part of that group to see where, uh, where you'd really be able to hit, based, you know, just rough estimates with those vantage points being, uh, No Business, uh, Brundage, nothing, that's our deal, but, uh, Tamarack or, or Snowbank or whatever. So.
So I guess our request, my request would be, I know that there is a little bit of uncomfort level with wilderness wireless being on our tower. But it creates opportunity for our citizens to receive a better signal. And if there is some concerns with safety there, we need to overcome, you know, whatever those safety concerns are. But I think that that is a way that we can support our citizens with higher broadband growth. And I think that we need, I think it's really gonna be important that we, um, make a statement and I don't know where it's at or how we do this, but broadband is a critical infrastructure. So when we are cutting a road that we only dig once, we lay fiber with every road project we pull up.
Didn't we already do that in our subdivision reg, said it's an, it's a utility and they have to at least install the pipe?
They do in the subdivision, but I don't believe it's in the road department.
No, I, I did put some language in the comprehensive plan. Senna's not here, but I don't know that it says exactly that, but I'll, I can dig that up to find out because that's why we put it in, the comprehensive plan was to at least get a start and say, hey, this is based on what the last commissioners, uh, wanted. This is an important thing. It's a necessity in Valley County. I can't remember the exact language, but it's, it may be close enough to at least a comprehensive plan, which should be, you know, a guiding document, at least line J twice.
So David, you know, Davis's do that for this new development on the other side of the river? Is that, are they required to put in fiber optics?
That, I don't know about that. If we could get sent in here, that, you know, that's a great, you know, and something.
That's where it should be put, places like that. They should be required to put that in.
Yeah, and that's been talked about. I don't know, I can't recall, because that was, you know, extends over, not that, I should have a better memory than that, but I don't exactly recall whether or not we're doing that. Through our process.
So that's City of Cascade and, oh, City of Cascades ordinance states that. But if we actually have a critical infrastructure, you know, mandate for the county, then it kind of helps inform the cities on what they should be requiring also, most subdivision ordinances. So, but I also think we need to make sure that anytime we rebuild road, that we're putting fiber underneath of it. You know, that those kinds of things, you dig once always for every project that we're doing.
Senator, the question is, Senator, did we get in the comp plan that fiber optics is a utility and any new subdivisions have to install the pipe at least?
No, the comp plan is not, the document that requires that. That would be in ordinance and it says utilities, it doesn't specify. So in any new subdivisions, we've been requiring that.
So it's the one that Phil's doing across from the river, is that gonna have?
That's in the city.
I know, but has the city done that?
The city is doing it, yes.
Did they do an ordinance requiring that?
Probably not yet. It takes a while to, to do an ordinance. The city's been working under ordinances now for three years.
No, we have, we're working on our own two here, so.
Yeah.
So just making sure that, you know, it's in our subdivision, subdivision ordinance, if it is a utility, then maybe we need to strengthen that by saying utilities include as critical infrastructure broadband. You know, something so that a developer looking at it knows that broadband is included in whatever they're doing.
And we didn't do that? I thought we did that.
No.
Nope?
No, it's not, yeah, we haven't done any amendments for our subdivision ordinance yet. But I did tell people that right up front.
Can we add, like, we added some language in the comprehensive plan that made about broadband data. I can't remember the exact thing you would ask me.
Oh, yeah, it's, the comp plan, we did a little ditty about IT and broadband and stuff.
Did we say it was like a critical or a necessity?
I don't remember. But that would lead to an ordinance that requires it. The last subdivision we did, they convinced us that there's nothing to hook up to, at least the P and Z commission, so the P and Z commission did not require it because there's an alternative to laying fiber in the ground now, and they were using satellites because it was in a different location.
I think it's still important regardless of the alternatives, whether satellite or radio, to have fiber in the ground wherever you can. There's, there's big benefits that, that are greater benefits than the, than usually trying to do it with wireless.
Yeah, I think so too. I think we should require it on all development.
Well, I'll have to look at that condition on the last subdivision. There's like six lots.
Did we do it for the Midas Gold deal out in Little Valley? What about Midas Gold and Little Valley? Was that part of that? I don't remember seeing anything.
That's not a subdivision. Um, but they are laying new broadband.
Oh, they are?
Doing something to improve it. That's why Suleef is all in favor.
I know, you said they were doing a cell phone tower.
They are, they said that they're doing a tower, yes. New tower out there.
So we can ask that this afternoon, but we should look at our subdivision ordinance.
They need CP for that. It's not part of the CUP. But that's not a subdivision.
No, it's not, but it's a big enough development, commercial development, really. What do you call that? Light industrial?
Yes.
Well, they will most likely tie together all of their buildings with infrastructure anyway.
Right.
So.
So that would be an internal utility plan.
Yeah.
Between their office building and their lab. So I don't know that we would put in our ordinance that they have to tie together all their buildings.
Do, is there fiber optics going out there now? No, I didn't think so. Somehow we've got to.
It's a large conversation.
We gotta get.
Yeah, it's kind of changing into a bigger conversation.
Yeah.
But the original thing, but, but we can re-explore the, the tower. See if we can make that work if that's what the board wants.
So you would want to require Midas to put in fiber optics in the road versus putting in a cell tower?
Um, no, this just, just came up. I mean, when you're laying in, I think, maybe the City of McCall's doing this, when you're doing a new development or whatever and you're putting in electric or whatever conduit already, why not throw in some extra?
No, we do.
Conduit, so that you can put fiber in.
That's all we're asking.
That's what we're talking about.
And Jeff, in our road ordinance, do you have anywhere in your operations plan that when you guys tear up a road, you put fiber in before you pay again?
No.
Okay, we need to add that to any kind of a operations.
Usually the fiber optics are off on the side, aren't they, Jeff, in the right of way?
Or at least empty conduits to use.
Empty conduit, that's all I'm asking.
Yeah, there's. You don't want anything buried under our roads for the easements worth. We don't, we're usually not digging out there where those things are.
Okay, we'll have a greater conversation on that one.
Okay, we're gonna move on. We're out of time. I guess, uh, would you just kind of keep us in the loop? What'd you come up with? You guys come up with?
So if you need my help to contact Forest Service, let me know.
Yeah, I will. Yeah, I will. I'll, I'll try to get hold of them, if, 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 if they are tomorrow, I'm happy to agree that, that, and look at the existing tower. There's ways to, I know we're getting, there's ways to, you, I don't know, we're gonna address any of this, there are concerns.
Okay.
Okay, we're gonna move on down our agenda. The next item is an action item. It's Computer Arts Master Agreement. Computer Arts Master Agreement for Software Support License. And David, this is a really hard thing to read.
Yes, it's a terrible thing. And this is our, our software that runs a lot of what the different offices use, from pressure to the clerk's office to jury to law enforcement currently. But we're moving up, um, we need to renew that, this for the next year fully. And then the year after that, we'll probably just renew the court side or almost certainly just the court side of that. And that had been the plan. We're budgeted for it. It's been the plan for the last year or so. And it hasn't changed dramatically. Usually they, this year they've been really good and tried to keep the cost down because of COVID and different things.
Did the price go up?
It, uh, it might've gone up a little bit, you know, but they, like I said, they tried to keep it down.
Thirty-two thousand eight hundred.
And we don't do the technical support, uh, portion of that. Um, we haven't done that for eight, probably eight years or longer.
Right. I'd entertain a motion then to approve the Computer Arts Master Agreement. I think all three of us signed this. If I'm reading right.
I would move that we, uh, sign and approve the Computer Arts Master Agreement for Software and Support License.
Oh, second act.
Move to second. Any more discussion? All favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Given that you need to come up here, there's about 27 different things to sign here, and I'm not sure where you want me to go. Do all three of us sign this or just, and then there's another one here? Yep. Nope, nope, nope. Here's your clip. There it is.
Bring it back here in a minute.
Sure. Hey, the next action item, we're a little bit early on. It's okay. It's a memorandum of understanding with the Idaho Forest Group and the U.S. Postal Service, use of Smiths Ferry Drive. And I guess we got those. Phil, does anybody have them? Where is it? Hang on a sec.
I don't think it had been sent out by the prosecuting attorney's office, which the chairman, if you recall, I had requested that Chief Deputy Prosecuting Attorney Serhay Stavinsky, uh, review that and work on that. And I have not seen a document.
When I talked to Serhay on Friday, he sent out, he's got it done, but he wanted Carol to look at it today. And we haven't got that part done yet. Um, I know Carol's here.
Have there been any issues?
No, all the lawyers were calling me this morning asking when this is gonna happen. Well, we're all planning if you got it in there. It was really nice the other day when I came back from High Valley. I went that way because the lawyers were, Jim from Evergreen's wondering if you'd get in there and blade it. So that was an excuse for going over the top. Officer Gersin was on that side with the, I don't know. A couple of people pulled up while I was there and talked about, about we're not going this way. But the guy's not there and no other.
And they're asking you to blade it?
It doesn't need it.
Because I thought part of this was they were gonna blade it and water it and maintain it while they're using it.
Yep.
I just sent Carol a text saying she can come up. But that's the last I heard, waiting for her to approve the agreements.
Did I help Serhay on it a little bit Thursday? I think he called and had some questions.
Trying to see where that is. Let's see if she can, give her a little bit, see if she can come up.
She was in court when I sent it to her a few minutes ago. And Serhay is on criminal mediation.
So Doug, if it would be all right with you, I would like to postpone this till later on the day.
That's what I was just gonna say. Is we tabled it till later in the day. Prosecuting attorney said she would be available later.
Yeah. We need to get this done today, so. Like, well, I can't say anything more to the agreement, but. They, are they using it now? Do you have the loggers? They're not?
We can't, till we sign this, is where we are.
They've got Ray Olson hired to do all the watering for it.
Carol can't come up right now. She's in court. So we'll just have to wait till she's available and then we'll come back. You want us to call you when?
Yes, please.
Okay.
We can do that for like lunchtime too, if we needed to.
Yeah. We'll let you know as soon as we know. Okay?
I have a question regarding that. This is just popped in my mind. Doug and I had talked about the fact that our meetings are on Monday and that's when Carol is unavailable. And, you know, there's a lot of times that, that you can't attend because of that. Now, why not make our meetings on Wednesday? Why are they on Monday? Because we get all of our stuff. I work every Sunday because that's when we get the, you know, I have the time to work on it. Just a thought.
You know, that's a good question because they've always been on Monday since I've been a commissioner. I don't know who set that particular date. I guess it's first day of the week. You want to pay bills before the fifth, if you can, every month, get that all out.
Still, it would even be a Tuesday would be better than a Monday, just so that, you know, people may be more readily available. That is, is every day a court day, Doug?
Yes.
So it wouldn't, may not matter what day we have it.
Not for the prosecuting attorney's office, unfortunately.
If that's the only reason we're changing it, I would say let's leave it on Monday because everybody knows it's on Monday right now. If she's busy, she's busy. We just gotta wait.
We are getting our stuff now. Doug's office has been very good about trying to get us everything on Thursday. So we have Friday to be able to do it. I just normally don't do it on Fridays. My bad.
Well, I just wonder how many more years it's gonna be before we have to go to two days a week meetings?
I'm here two days a week anyway.
Some, some agendas are full.
You wanna hear about another problem I got?
Yeah, bring it on up, David.
Is this personal or work?
Work.
Oh.
You got, uh, about 25 minutes till our next agenda item.
What's up?
Okay.
Six. And then I'll take it back.
Okay. Okay, what do you got, Jeff? Did, uh, Frat?
Frat retired misprue.
What's his name? Dave?
Um, I had another guy lined up. He went up there Thursday to meet with him. He doesn't have CBL anymore.
Good boy.
On disability. Called another lady up there. Weren't happy to help. No CBL. And Jim Kennedy, Neil is, doesn't have the manpower to do it. Come in and help, but you can't do it on a regular basis.
Anybody that lives in Smiths Ferry that?
Can't get from Smiths Ferry to High Valley.
Oh.
So Tom, how much do we plow up there? It's just across the valley floor, isn't it?
County lane, across the valley floor, Beals, turn right down the drive up toward about a half mile, half mile. It's gonna go to Jeff's, north.
What's the total mileage on that?
Man, that's gonna be tough.
About nine miles.
Why do we, why do we do it?
Doesn't really sound. I've been here 20 years. It's always been a county truck out there with a, somebody driving it.
And a lot of road we don't maintain if we can't. It's gonna have to be, you know, a posting to hire somebody on the other side that might be an excavation.
One more guy is called. He's, we have to hire this contractor with the road grader. It's gonna cost.
That's brilliant.
So you brought somebody on as a part-time employee just to do that? That's the way that that was being?
Yeah, we just, yeah, they were actually as employees.
Kind of like yellow pine.
Yeah.
But they lived up there, so it was handy to have. Now they've gotten old and retired and that's.
We've got fuel tank up there. We've got spare pieces of parts, oils, loops, everything for the truck up there. And I don't have anybody.
How many people live up there? I mean?
Um, a little time, maybe.
So there is, there's a number.
Is there a bus route too?
Terrace Lakes. Do we plow Terrace, is it Terrace Lakes up there? That's Boise County.
Uh, this contractor guy, say how much he got.
I think that's what we're looking at.
Hundred and twenty dollars an hour.
And that's with his equipment?
So maybe we needed a community meeting and find out what those people's interest is also. I mean, we're providing a service to 20 people back in there that we can't get to from our side.
It's open to give. Yellow pine is one thing, but up there, if this truck breaks down, mechanic has to go to horseshoe bed and long tour, sweep the hole, pull it off. About a two hour, two and a half hour trip in the winter time to get a service truck in there.
So it really doesn't make sense to have it our person anyway.
You know, it'd be nicer if it was a contract, but I didn't put it in the budget to have to pay out fifteen thousand dollars in contractor fees to file.
Jeff, could we contract with either Boise or Jim County?
Jim County, I've already talked to Neil about it. We've already got to deal with them to come in and help when needed, but he doesn't have the manpower to do it every snowstorm. And Dave, Dave got stuck a few different times. I called Neil. Neil was, yeah, wait two or three hours. Dave calls wife, wife come in, Neil go back up to the house. He probably goes to the lake and I come down there and hold it.
I guess mine would suggest it to see if, if they'd be willing to take it on and how much it would cost. That we would have to give them the money to hire the staff to do it.
Probably.
That, unless you got a better idea.
No, I, that's why I put twenty needles here last week. He, he thought about it. He tried finding a part-time guy to plow the long tour area that would kick a road grader loose for three, four hours and they go in there and do it and send us the bill. And he just doesn't have the manpower to. Somebody up there every time it snows.
So would it be better if we set it up, just plow like once a week? And then they're snowed in until it gets plowed out or?
It slows six inches every day. And take a big snow blow and open the road up.
Yeah. Yeah, you gotta do it every time.
Back down. Dave, Dave was really good up there keeping everybody in line. Four inch heavy wet stuff to deal with it. Ain't gonna pile. If somebody had a road grader up there, I'm not up there to watch him every day. If I told him to plow every four to six inches, he might be buying four inches of fluff and he doesn't need to. I don't know this guy. I've talked to him on the phone, but.
To me, you do it as a set contract, you know? I mean, if it's per hour, they, we plow and whatever.
Yeah.
Make it as a set contract and.
Average twenty-one storms a year. When you howl it across that valley, it might not snow with two inches and drift road shit. And we go back on Dave's time machines and I'll say, I don't know, what's he doing? How many hours left last year?
Yeah.
About thirty, twenty, thirty hours a month. Wow.
That's pretty darn reasonable there. So we kind of know what it's probably gonna cost us for labor.
The thing is, we were supplying the truck.
Right.
Dave, we were paying Dave nineteen dollars an hour. Now we're gonna have to bump that to a hundred and twenty dollars an hour.
Well, if we don't supply the truck, he's, maybe if we went out forth, like a bid or RFP or something on somebody to plow it with their own equipment. I don't know. I'm just shooting from the hip here, Mr. I don't know how to handle that one.
It might get.
Basically, you gotta live there.
Somebody that's living there's gotta step up and say, yeah, I'll plow it.
And everybody that, I mean, while I was up there, Michelle Beck told me three or four phone calls and talked to everybody that, that brought up interest in it. And all of a sudden it's like, oh, we're retired. Nope, let my CBL go. Mike doesn't run out.
You gotta put it out to the people that actually have the ability to do it and see if you can get some response. I mean, and if not, if you don't have somebody, I mean, it changes the situation up there. You can't do something we can't do.
They want to do it, but I don't have it in budget to pay it.
Warren has his own equipment or you's our?
He has his own equipment. He's a contractor. The thing is, I don't know if he has contractor license or liability insurance, all that other stuff. I have no idea. I gotta call it.
He's gonna have to.
Yeah, I think I would go down that trail and see what he ends up bidding. And who knows? It might not be that much more.
He, he told Neil that I take four hours to plow it. I'm thinking. Four hours.
Well, it depends on what you're using.
Road grader should take one hour and a half.
No.
Two hours at most.
But if he's got a little bobcat with a blower on it, it might take him six hours.
No, it's, it's a one forty.
Oh, it is a grader? So let's shoot him an offer and see what he says.
And Mike's got two road graders up there. My back, well, that's what the old, old Alice Chalmers, sixties area was. I don't mind using them to help out, but I need full time to try and kill them.
I guess then if everything fails, then what do you do? Notify the landowners that we're not gonna be plowing that snow this year?
All we can do.
It's all you can do.
If there's that many people up there, we need to try and do everything we can to take care of them.
And more and more people building up there. This summer, just everywhere you look up there now, there's new house on this dollar, there's new house over here, there's a new driveway we went in. Those are the people that will call and complain this way.
Yep.
Under storage and snow group.
How far is it from wherever we stopped to come over to Smiths Ferry? A little long way?
Long ways.
Oh, yeah, that's.
I haven't been over that road in years.
What, eleven miles?
Yeah, I was gonna say close to fifteen, probably.
Eleven, twelve miles and it's just like this?
Yeah.
We've got two really, really steep summits. We got, we got two tripod summit and we have to do the hill coming down. It's a groomed trail, so.
Yeah. Okay. Never mind. Never mind. I haven't been over that road in years.
I guess my feeling is, you know, contact this guy that's maybe interesting, see what he comes back with.
Good.
And if it's more than what we have, then I would go back to the landowners up there and say, you guys are gonna have to contribute if you want this road plowed. Because we just don't have it. See where that goes. That work for everybody?
I mean, it wasn't, wasn't up for discussion today.
I know, I know.
We had, we had twenty minutes.
Move forward, Jeff.
Oh, boy. We'll catch some hell on that one. You know, it's just sad. People get old and retire. It's like, why doesn't everybody just keep working?
I don't understand why people live up there when they're old and retired. And, you know, I mean, that's a heck of a place to have a, an emergency situation happen.
It's the old life.
Yeah.
Yep, same here.
Back there. I'm not gonna say, oh, old bird, retired. Only gotta come out once a week for doctor's appointments and.
Yeah. Rich reason. Yeah. But this Firda Road, agreeing with you just sent me?
Was the mission to Firda Road?
So these are the approved, correct?
Yeah, I've moved in your.
Jeff, would Smith Creek of Firda or an RS two four seven seven?
RS two four seven.
That's what I thought.
They want us to do a Firda on it.
Right.
It's a good ATV trail.
Yeah.
We have an ATV trail.
That's not on our Schedule A, is it? No.
No, if we go down to the Smith Creek Bridge, that's where we stop. That's the old original road in the Big Creek.
If we let that RS two four seven seven go, that road would be probably permanently closed?
No.
No, I don't, I mean, the RS two four seven seven doesn't really have any bearing on whether or not it stays open or closed right now. It would be left in its current state unless we decided we wanted to pursue the Firda.
We can assert the RS two four seven seven and make it stay open, I think. It's a little narrow out.
Right.
It's the original road in the Big Creek.
Right. And it's not a bad road, especially on a four wheeler.
That's just it. But it crosses. That's just it. It crosses three fish bearing streams. One's gonna require a bridge, the other ones are two or three, a lot of massages.
So they just want.
$10,000.
To get it up to a road.
Create ATV trail.
Yep, mountain bike trail, everything.
So they just want it as a Firda road to solidify the RS 2477? So we can still claim RS 2477 even if we don't do a Firda easement on it?
I think so.
So they really can't do anything, you know? We just continue to maintain that's.
The only way they could stop traffic is if they proved that it was damaging the fisheries crossing those.
And I, as I say, I got the impression that what they're asking is that they want us to Firda it so that we can do the upgrades as needed. Or if we decide that we want to do upgrades or it becomes necessary to do upgrades, that we then would be responsible for those.
They want to turn it into a road. They want to turn it back into a road.
Why is that, do you think?
What's that?
Why is that? What would be the motivation to turn that thing to a road?
When Gordon was here, it was, it was basically another route for the Big Creek residents to get out. If they were to fire Golden Creek, it's another route for them to get out. Right now, if I didn't start getting there, I'd be heading through the river.
Well, they're supposed to be doing some mediation work around Big Creek and Andrewsburg.
Next summer.
Next summer, and that's supposed to relieve some of their concerns back there, but. I like it just the way it is, like we are right now. Everything's working fine and it's still in access to get out.
Yeah, I mean, everybody back, there's gotta be ATV or a Jeep for them to pick up or something they can haul it through there.
Well, I think too, it's just, it's one of those things, is we're reviewing our roads right now. It's a really hard one to justify us taking any more maintenance responsibility for.
I mean, that is, that point is way back there.
Yeah, that's like the end of the system, that's for sure.
It absolutely is.
I've been on it quite a few times and it's a pretty neat place to go.
Thunder Mountain, boy, talk about sticking your neck almost to Montana.
Yeah, almost. Well, Carol came back in, so we're gonna go back and talk about the memorandum of understanding with the Idaho Forest Group. Have you guys got that done? With the loggers for Smith's Ferry Road? Serhie said he had it all done and you were gonna look at it today.
He hasn't given that to me. He's in a mediation now, so I took that from him and then looked at that. I don't have time right now to do that, so.
Okay, if you don't mind doing that, we tabled it until later on today to make that, because the loggers are asking again today for that memorandum.
He's just, he's, I covered court for him today because he's in a criminal mediation, so I'll go upstairs and get that from him and courts doesn't go back on record until one o'clock.
Okay, so if you can do that and then get back to us. Perfect, thank you very much. So we have about 12 minutes for our next agenda item. If you want to need a break, which I do, this would be a good time to take a break.
And Jeff, you agree with this Firda road where all the yellow highlights are?
Yeah. Just a short note, stuck things. That, that's an old date on that, it's 2015, but nothing's changed. It's supposed to be given.
Can I get you to sign this one, please?
Hopefully you can come to that meeting in March or April.
I'm gonna send this out then to the road group.
Yeah, I'm kind of glad that we're able to see you and just answer questions and stuff. You can always add, order a few questions if somebody asks you like the. Thumb seems to be okay today. Boy, you should have seen it Thursday.
What's that?
Is that Kelly's?
Yeah.
You should have seen his thumb Thursday.
It's a bend.
You're just trying to get to the doctor. Oh, why? Why? Okay, I gotta write this up? Oh, right, nothing, I'll do it, Kelly.
Yeah, yeah, talked about that.
It was, it took his, I don't know what he was doing.
It looks like a bend way back in the stream.
Pushing really hard with the wrench.
Uh huh.
Something stumped him.
Did he dislocate it?
No, he had a knot right there on the underside of his thumb. He came in and pulled an ice pack on it, but don't tell me to cut your thumb off. No, I didn't, I didn't know the fact, but don't worry about it, I'm fine.
So I had a one today.
I didn't see it, but he wouldn't complain about it. He was out there gonna meet the truck working, so. It has to still hurt. I mean, that, my, my guess was it hadn't been dislocated, big as that knot was.
Oh, man.
His hamburger, you see it? Pushing as hard as he could with the wrench and something slipped and.
Yeah, out, out, out.
Just a cold mechanic.
How's their attitude? Go back to normal now?
I don't know, nothing, just a couple days worth and I was like, oh, soon it's been forgotten.
I'm sending you a really, really fascinating email. It's an attachment with a document for endowment. Something we discussed last week at the.
Pila.
Pila meeting. I still, I asked them in the board meeting if it was Pila or Pila. Nobody could quite decide.
And what is it?
Endowment land allowance.
Down the rate, you can downgrade that truck to 45,000 pounds, you know, you have a CPO directly.
Time I put on my mask.
So push comes to shove, you can't find anybody that puts it there. So I'm gonna try for something on a pay.
Contract.
The orange got. It was up there still. It was held like a forty deal, which one was? See, they're close to me. I have no idea where it goes. Early on, it was pulling some stuff out. I'm very excited. This was three or four years ago.
Yeah. We're traveling.
He doesn't have a place to plug in up there.
Let's just think something.
No, that's his fault. Yeah, he's contract, that's all his fault. He'll take that there. Yeah, knock that by Janet. But all, all nature, all the interesting things that has there. My fact is, a year ago, my probability of daughter, she's retired and is taking care of.
Yeah, married.
And his wife. You're making it sound this year, like he's about the same age. I'm turning, but I love to. Michelle's telling me to be a CPO.
Spider season. They've been out in force. I've seen some big nasties in our house.
Oh, yeah. I was covering up my garden last night and I picked up this blanket and there was a blast by a, that big, it looked like a dang crane, but it freaked me out.
Oh, just so you guys know, the heating oil cannot accept gas bills, so. I told Chris, told him he had the whole thing.
Oh, good.
And the heating oil too.
What's that?
The heating oil and the gas. Yeah.
Good, that's good to hear. That's bizarre. You'd think they'd at least let you know.
What's that?
You'd think they'd at least let you know.
I told Vicki, by the end of the day, Wednesday, if I'm here, I guess I'll have to call them on a call on Thursday. Oh, I was gonna call you today.
You're last on my list.
Fully staffed right now, just so you guys know.
Knock on wood, right now.
Right now.
Do you not put that into?
Right now.
No, you're not, because you don't have high alley cover.
Well, it's too bad we can't plow snow with a groomer, because they could go by and plow there on the groomer, but that's my guy.
So Jeff, is that with John or without?
Huh?
Is that with John? How long the road tests go without?
Without.
Okay, so I have to tell it now, thank you.
Yeah, I, I could even call him and talk to him and apologize to him, but. In my head, we have eighteen flower routes, so I, I don't know where I got that either.
Okay.
But I think what I was planning on doing was expecting Jim not to come back.
Yeah, probably.
Jim Jacobs?
Yeah.
So. Yeah, I don't know.
It's too bad he doesn't have the chemist's broom. I don't know.
The, another guy, Darrell Ellis's son, Dan, I think is his name?
He never applied?
I don't know. It's up to you.
I haven't seen him.
Does he live in there where Darrell used to live? Is Darrell still alive? I thought Darrell.
What about the guy from college? He's calling his cell phone.
I haven't called him. Somehow, some, Mickey's number is circulating, circulating around, because we've got two people interested in the mechanic position that called their cell phone.
Men have to change your number.
I don't want to answer it unless I know who did.
You know, I don't think it's in the men's room anymore, but it used to be on the wall.
Wow.
When they had an answer that, it was Dave Brock on my personal phone. They were like, how the heck did you get my phone number? Looks like he didn't. That's not right.
That's not fair, man. This is my day off. All right, Pat, come on up. We have our next agenda item is an action item. It's to change a road tech lead two to a senior road tech.
Yeah, and I didn't provide y'all with anything. It's more of a conversation, just to let you all know what's going on, but right now we have. We have a lead two, 11, 10? 10. Didn't write that down. Anyway, we want to change that position to a senior road tech on the kinds and levels chart. And the difference between the senior road tech and the lead two is that the leads were assigning work to people. This position won't sign, they'll just train people. So it's a higher, higher level than like a road tech two would be. But it's not a lead position, it's a training position. So we have somebody that stepped up to that plate and that's been doing it. And we just want to, your approval to be able to, to just add that position or change that position, the lead two to the senior.
A lead two can, can delegate work.
Right.
This guy is just a trainer.
For the most part, yes.
So he gets more money even though he can't delegate?
He will be a project manager, so there will be certain projects that he'll be working on where he can tell people what their assignments are.
So he's gonna be doing a little of both?
Yeah, just not have the same authority.
What's the difference in the salary?
It's the same as a lead tech two.
I don't have a lead anymore.
Right.
I replaced my two leads with an assistant.
So then the salary stays the same, even though we're changing from lead two to a senior road?
We don't have anybody in the lead two position right now.
Oh, that's right.
So we're just gonna eliminate the lead two position and put a senior road tech position there instead.
So why not just add two of them, because we need it in the future?
Oh, I can do it that way too.
So this would be like the number three guy?
Yeah, well, yeah, sort of.
Basically, on big projects, this person is gonna help the assistant. Yeah, I guess it's kind of third.
Third, third position.
Yeah.
Can you remind me what the hourly wages?
I could if I had it in front of me.
I think.
Doc, do you have the pay?
Yeah, I got it here somewhere, but it'd take me a long time to find it.
I know, I should, I'm not very prepared, am I? So.
So is this because one person is doing this? So basically what we're doing is we are promoting an individual into a higher position on that.
For now, but at some point, we'll have other people that can also, you know, maybe, I don't know, a couple of others that could also train. But the challenge that Jeff is having is that his crew is so young anymore. Not young, may not be the right word, but inexperienced. Yeah, he really doesn't have anybody that's experienced enough, except for one person to be in that position at this point.
I mean, he's actually, this new position will actually be helping my assistant. Learn his job a little bit better, also outfield.
I mean, I can't find it.
So.
The road tech two is an 11?
The lead two?
Correct.
Yep.
Which starts at 2273 and goes to 3209?
Mm-hmm.
So this position was started at the 2273 plus experience?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, this, this guy's already, Bruce.
Oh, okay.
That's, that's, he's already a road, he's a road master.
Master, yeah, master load?
One class away from the master.
Must be one class away. I think he's just a scholar. So in, in this situation, or I'm not, we're not trying to create a position for one person. It is for the futures. I want to make that clear. I don't like creating a position for one person. It doesn't make sense. But in this, this situation, when Matt left, Bruce just took over. He just, you know, would go out there and work with the people. He's been training the new person, a couple of new people that have come in. One in particular on how to run a road grader. And that's probably the, the, the area that Jeff needs the most help, his road grader operator. So he's been training them as well. So while it feels like we're making that position for the one person, it really is not. If we have another person, and Jeff actually has somebody in mind, that eventually could move into that position as well. So there may be that any one time, we might have two people that are trainers or senior road techs.
Well, and you're short grader operator, so you need somebody to train.
Right.
That's probably the biggest issue right now.
Yep, I think.
I've got a dude guy from Texas, but he was trained the wrong way on how to lay roads. And now we're trained to.
How do you get trained wrong?
Oh, pretty easy, learn how to run a road grader the wrong way. I mean, to blade a 24 foot wide road, it should take seven to nine passes. In Texas, they do it three.
Put it in the middle and flatten it out. And he's still kind of meshy ground. So what's your pleasure?
I don't have a problem with that. I think it gives upward mobility to people within the department and they see another opportunity for advancement, so, you know, I like that. Is this within the budget that you have? So if it's within the budget, I don't have any problem with it.
So you want to make a motion?
Ashley, is this on for an action item?
Yes.
Yeah, it is. Just to add the position.
I move that we add the position of a senior road tech to our kinds of levels chart and pay scale.
Any more discussion? Everybody good? All favor, please say aye. Aye, motion carries.
Thank you very much, Commissioner, I appreciate you.
Jeff, as soon as we get that MOU for the loggers, I'll give you a call. Sign it, whatever, I can bring it down to you, whatever you need. She was gonna go get it from Surry and take a look at it. Well, I'm sure, I'm not sure he had it done, but he wanted Carol to look at it, so... And I think you should look at it too, to make sure we're kosher. So as soon as we get it, we'll get it, try and get it done. And our next agenda item is at eleven o'clock, so we got about eight minutes if you need to do something else. Doug, do you need any supplies for elections, wear a mask, or any signs like that?
Nope, we are all taken care of.
He's got some here.
Hold him accountable. He's got black shoulders. But you hold him accountable to the only that say you like it. Is that the woman that says that we can lease the, the land?
That came up a couple times last week with different folks, and I was like, I'm not aware.
Well, it was, and it stated specifically we could not, and that we would have no more rights than anyone else at the table to do it. So the lawyer...
On a lease, though, not, not as a purchase. That's, I think that's what this is saying versus what we've been talking about, because we've been talking about a purchase like a competitive auction. This is saying that that doesn't necessarily apply to a lease. So that, I, I ask, I see Carol on that too, just...
Well, I thought the Constitution said they couldn't sell ground. Endowment lands, they had to trade them, something like that, but they couldn't, they couldn't make the asset smaller.
They can auction. Like if that's the highest and best use.
So that's how they're doing the lots. I just know over the years dealing with Department of Lands, it's like, you guys don't have any authority over us, we can do whatever we want.
Right.
So, Constitution states if it's a lease that's longer than twenty years, I think it is, they have to have the consent of the county commissioners.
And that has never happened.
Well, they probably are doing leases that are not more than...
No, I was gonna say, I think the longest leases that they're doing right now are ten-year leases.
They sent us a deal when they started auctioning off the lots around, the leases around the lake, saying this is what we're gonna do, just so you guys know, but we didn't have the authority.
What was, do you know what the duration of those leased lots were?
Ten years.
But, I don't know.
Ninety-nine years.
That's what I thought, because those were...
They were originally ninety-nine years.
Well, see, and that all blew up when they did the wedding venue thing, and that's when everything changed, even the grazing leases, used to be a lot longer, now they're ten years. They used to be a twenty-five year deal, fifty year deal, they changed all that.
Yeah, I was blown, the way I've been in two different areas in the last week. On IDL ground, they're harvesting rock, like you would not believe, I mean, I'm guessing it's, you know, increasing the high end homes with, you know, people who want that kind of rock, but the quarry on East Side Drive up off the Silvergate Road, they've been blasting. And I mean, they've removed a lot of material up there, and then they have excavators that are just driving around through the woods, picking up boulders and bringing them back to a tree.
I know Toby's getting all the rock from the Smiths Ferry job. And he was talking about thirty cents a pound.
And there's thousands.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, a ton of rock, great.
Saw a truck coming out of somewhere the other day, it really surprised me. There was a rock truck coming down out of a locked gate on IDL ground. I can't remember where I was, but it surprised me, it looked, wow. It was a Volvo.
So they must have some kind of commercial permits.
They do, yeah, they have a commercial rock.
You never see anything advertised for it.
It's just an application.
Just go in there and fill it up, and yeah, you're five bucks, and you get to do what you want.
That's one of the... No, that's what I'm saying, you know, the landscaping, the landscaping that they're doing, they charge premium for those granite boulders. Slabs for, you know, either landscaping outside, and people are doing, you know, all kinds of custom stuff inside their own town. And that's one of the key quarries that they've been using over the years. I mean, I couldn't believe it when I was up there last week, how much rock. It's East Side Drive, there's a lock gate that's on IDL ground on East Side, so we've been scouting that area for the trails, and I have access to all of those gates. And, yeah, I just looked at that, and then the amount of excavator track just through the woods. And they're telling us about the impact recovery from the four foot wide trails. You see, you know, large track vehicles, building roads, you know, boulders, actually, they're just telling us like, we have to live at this standard, it's a double standard. You know, it doesn't make any sense. So, the leases are huge that they have going on, you know, right now, like said, the grazing, and the rock. Because they're not going to be, a lot of the time, they're not going to be thinking about another kind of start for twenty to fifty years. They just don't have any, nothing valuable in the areas they just access. They have some timber that's on East Side Drive, where they can pull out. Kind of in that wedding venue up to the credit point, and that's already been marked, and they're waiting, I think, for a bid on the sale for contract, but stuff above that, where they were lighting on, it's just, etc. We saw, I mean, some mining earth logging from probably, I guess, like the forties and fifties, when they were cutting, you know, four or five foot trees. And, I'm like, how did they get these out with the equipment that they have at that time? There's no skidder, they didn't have helicopter logging. I don't know if it was, you know, aerial or... Mules. There's not even safe ground for mules off.
I was figuring out why I was so loaded.
We may have had that conversation. Then I drove through Francie Wallace. It was buttery smooth up there. I really, I really had to fight with my inner demons to not just throw my truck sideways and start spinning cookies on that fresh gravel. Yeah, it's kind of loose, but it's nice.
Looks like an airport landing strip.
It does, yeah, it's great. There were, um... Thursday, I was up one wagon road, when I drove in there, and there were five campers in the parking lot at Francie Wallace, you know, right at the end of the season for bow hunting. Well, I was at Francie Wallace. And then... Yeah, Saturday, there were at least eight UTV trailers and rigs that were in there that were using that as a staging squad.
That's good to see.
A lot of, a lot of people using those.
I was never used in the past. Summer, time was empty.
I try to avoid those unless I need them.
According to Sheriff, that's already happening. And this is only Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, the rest of the week is open. It kills their second trip of the day. So that's like fifty percent reduction.
Just to see, you know, kind of that snowmobile area, I've never been out there. I didn't know, I just kind of went to the...
Well, it's only for empty trucks, headings. And then the, the mail truck. They already are.
I went out no business, just barely.
Yeah, it's got people in it. And they're telling people you can't go through. Well, after Thursday at two, I'm assuming... So it's kind of ITD's call, or DOL's call, because maybe they weren't doing any blasting at that time on Thursday, so... Well, we need to, we need to get it open for the loggers, or they're gonna, they're gonna see us. Yeah, but we, we really need to help those guys out. Well, Jeff, on the road to Smiths Ferry, there is a person by, the ITD is hired at each end of that, going over the hill, right? At the end of each hill, on Smiths Ferry, there is a person, and there are the less people in the road.
Ten to two.
From ten to two, and then after that, they just back off and let go.
At the ten to two closure, they flagger on each side.
There was a guy there on Thursday that told me, go ahead, go over, go over High Valley, the, the road.
I don't know who's, I mean, I got an email from, Dear Dick, that's his last name? Derek, or whatever, he was in here giving his presentation, ITD engineer, younger kid.
Yeah, and I wasn't here that week.
I got an email from him, said his flaggers are getting people through there that say, oh, we're on Valley County's list, we can use this road. Well, he wanted the list.
Well, he needs the flagger.
Well, there is no list. He goes, that's kind of what I figured, you're blowing smoke. I go, yeah, we have no list.
Yeah, we need to get them that list, that was part of what we were supposed to do. Sheriff?
So like Thursday night, there was an incident where they had to close the road. Because they had to get an excavator and tractor trailer out of the middle of the road, it took several hours, people weren't using that, so I'm wondering, in those cases, do we allow the single units to go there or not?
That road is not made for people that don't know how to drive on up roads.
Because the people that know, then they people follow, so it's, there was a lot when I was going down, I got stuck in that too, and when I was going down, I could see the dust and round out.
My understanding was for empty trucks, logging trucks heading south, and the mail person, that was the only...
That's all we did, yeah, but we're not, there's no barrier, there's no flagger after hours for the construction, once they quit working, they're done.
The barricades are still up.
The barricades were moved. And they told us to go through.
Yeah.
So what is that road? I mean, if, if there's no road construction, I have the right to travel that road?
It's public road.
So it's a public road?
Except it's closed now.
But it's been officially closed by the tree.
I understand that. So I mean, no road construction, I mean, just, it's a normal public road.
Yeah. And most, I, I think people, oh, I gotta wait fifteen minutes in line, I'm gonna go over the top, or it takes a half hour to go over the top. They go over the top of the line and traffic, they would have been in there already gone.
Mr. Chairman, I just attempted to contact Mr. Stromeyer, his office indicated that he had to go out on assignment. I don't know if that means that he won't be able to...
Because it doesn't sound like he's gonna be here.
So I don't know if the commissioners would like to go to our...
Unit of adjutant? Just give me a few more minutes. So Jeff, when we close the road, is it twenty-four hours closed, or it just closed during eight to five, or? Day and night?
Where I lived, about five o'clock every night, those heavy haul trucks, they, they blast all day, ended to get a lane open, and all night long. Those heavy haul trucks are hauling material from that canyon, all night long. The flaggers are still working in that canyon twenty-four hours a day.
Are the flag, are the people on the barricades on Smiths Ferry there too as well? Only ten to two.
So we've closed, but I'm just, I'm, I'm still a little confused on the whole issue, because it's a public road. I mean, if there is no, we're not limiting anyone from going over that, if there's no road construction.
We are, if we close it, because there's things going on, maybe we closed it and we don't maintain it in the winter. We don't plow it. So it's closed by virtue of nature in the winter time, but it's a closed road, we aren't maintaining it.
Dangerous.
Especially going down the east side, going down the east side is pretty, pretty steep, pretty narrow.
You all seen what happened on ninety-five with that rock slip. Every guy in there, the gurus, tried to go over French Creek.
Short of having a sheriff deputy there, though, there's really no way you can keep people out.
Yeah, I think the flaggers are getting tired of being harassed, so, oh, yeah, go ahead.
Well, and people say, well, I'm, I'm a local, it's local traffic.
And they come from the Smiths Ferry site, correct? They're not gonna come from this site. Well, I still think we need to do something for the loggers, because we can't put those guys out of business on that second haul every day.
So then the question is, do you want them to, between the, and the post office have to post somebody front back twenty-four seven? Or, except for ten to two, when ITD's doing it?
Just go to ten to two?
That's the only time they're supposed to be using the bypass. It was very specific, post office can use it between ten and two, going north, and they can use it between ten and two coming south. But then maybe after all this is over with, we need to close that road, or close that road, or do something to...
Larry?
Mr. Stromeyer won't be here, he got called out on a fire in California on Saturday.
Okay. Thank you for that.
So my concern is now you're having the loggers and the US Postal Service service the road, you're gonna have the general public coming, and now, we have the liability of the roads, and you assess somebody else the responsibility to take care of it.
Aren't they just doing the watering, though? I mean, they're not gonna do any blade work or anything on it?
If, if these later deal with it, we'll do it and charge them.
But from ten to two, it's closed to everybody but the loggers in the mill. After two o'clock, this is just a normal county road, is that the way to look at it?
I got two barricades on each side, it's a road closed to three traffic.
But that MOU isn't that, that's what we're doing, it's like a road maintenance agreement, like we can do with anybody else that's playing road.
The problem is, is the general public is using it as well, that's what my concern is, are we requiring them to, this is a private road now, no trespassing? And, and how are we monitoring that? Or is a general public coming on board, and then, because who's gonna bear that responsibility? If we're, because in the wintertime, they wouldn't normally plow it, but they're going to plow it.
No, yeah, no.
Only three of them.
They're, they're gonna open up the highway...
In the winter.
Fifteenth of November.
Whenever snow forces them to open that highway up. Construction stops.
So, and it's entirely up to you, but I'm just concerned, and the barriers are going to happen, send us a good example, they run a goat program.
Well, if somebody goes up there and slides off the road, it... Well, if somebody goes up there and slides off the road at any time of day or night, past our barricades, it's, I think we've done everything we could to reduce our liability. Sheriff, you want that done?
Yeah, like, but it's closed to, to through traffic, there's what, six homes up there? Seven homes up there, those people have permission to get back and forth to their home, but how far back is that? I mean...
Going about 300 yards.
So, thereon...
So they can move the barriers up 300 yards and...
The reason we put it down at that water...
Oh, so, turn around. Yeah, but the issue now, we got to think about this seriously, because it's just gonna be all next summer.
So, an option is to put three barricades wide on each side, but then I'm gonna have barricades destroyed, and so I'm gonna have people pulling them out of the way. And these are big class, two barricades are seven feet wide and 15 feet tall, three bars long, still movable.
I think what we can do is post that it's closed, if they go beyond that, they become liable for it.
It's closed, I mean, it's...
Is there a sign at the bridge that says Smith Ferry Road closed?
There was one, 39 goes, it was...
Yes, yes.
But they went over the, the, the east coast, too.
Yeah.
We have road rage everywhere right now, I wanted to run over somebody that's...
I mean, we got the option of a gate, a couple of powder river gates on each side, like here and here, that's gonna be a thousand buck placement, because someone's gonna put a chain onto it, rip the guard thing down. Better off is the way we got it, with two barricades, road closed to through traffic, maybe we can add signage, and we don't even want to execute the travel, you know, risk, because then people are gonna go...
Well, that's okay, I'll take the risk, yeah.
But we're only dealing with that up in, for another month, right?
For this year, but next year's gonna be...
Next year's gonna be bad, because that Smith Ferry drive doesn't melt out till, you know, middle of May, in the rain somewhere in there. And they're gonna start from March 15.
I might have a tow truck.
I don't know, I, I think what we did was best.
Jeff, you're always gonna have the doughheads trying to get through.
Basically, like what I'm yelling people, those barricades are like a padlock, you only need the honest people on it.
The issue I'm running into is guys want to go up there and hunt from the east side, because there's quite a few elk up there. Road's closed, you gotta figure out another way, and there's other ways to get in there.
You wanna sneak through there? There to watch you, I guess you can take your cat to sneak through there. If somebody else is sneaking through the other way, and being on that hill coming in around Valley, and there'll be a little bit of snow on the road, hang on.
Yeah, yeah.
It's deep, 10%.
There's a lot of roads like that out there.
There is, it's just that that one there is accessible to people that shouldn't be on it.
All of them are accessible, just whether they know it's there or not.
Personally, I think we need to go ahead and improve their MOU with the loggers and, and the, the mail, and keep going the way we are. I know we're gonna have people that are gonna move it and drive by and get, and, and they're gonna get in trouble, they'll obviously slide off the road, or something will happen, but we need to keep the loggers going. Because of the tussling months, if they don't get that timber out now, it's gonna be, there's nothing but rot by next year.
That's what I'm saying with, you were starting mentioning Jipos, that's why it's...
Yeah.
All NP logging.
All NP logging trucks, makes sense.
Other nation goes, okay, I'm gonna throw a foot of snow at you here in a week and a half, they're gonna bury every Jiplo they can find.
Yeah, they're what, a month and a half behind right now on that project.
And they have another one to bid for the spring, so nobody's gonna bet it if they know that they can't.
Right.
There's no way to do it, so.
So Carol, can you get the MOU together?
Yeah, so you want to just leave it closed, but we're not gonna maintain it. Um, and then between 10 and 2, we're going to close except for, um, cars who have permission to travel on the road, which would be the seven homeowners, and the empty trucks coming south, and the post office going hard.
And that's, this is till November 15th, and then after that, it'll snow shut and the road will open and...
Um, and, and I suspect maybe what we should do is just draft an MOU for the middle again, and then just go back and look at it, or when they're gonna open that up.
That's a great idea, for this, just for this year only.
And, and then, you know, we take a look at it and see how, or see if there's something we need to do, because that makes more sense to me. But, and if it's just a matter of just renewing it, it's just easy for this to do. And, um, they're gonna be responsible for dust, and they're gonna be responsible for voiding if it needs it, and, and how are we going to do that? Is the post office paying for that too?
I don't know about the post office, but we had four or five logging companies in here the other day.
And they said, they think, so it's different companies too, that's why I wanted to say, whoever we give permission to, if it's easy to do, is we can make them joint and separate and responsible. And it means, if you get 100% of the bill, you can go after your friends who are also using the road, I mean, we can do that. I just don't know if we were gonna charge the post office to do that as well.
They, what, we weren't, they said that they, they could go through there no matter what because of federal law.
Yeah, there's a law.
They had a federal mandate, so...
And stop the mail.
I don't think they're gonna...
I'm not even gonna get into that, because I'm not sure that we, tiny gun, let's get rid of that problem, but, I mean, if we're gonna make the loggers do it, I suppose. The, the loggers agreed when they were in here, and they... And they're just gonna do dust abatement later if they need to.
Yeah, later they need...
The push will come next summer when they're having to do dust abatement every other day, so they're probably gonna do something like perchloride or that, or some other form.
Because you're gonna have a lot of trespassers, so they're paying, you know, that worth to them, but, might be worth it to them, I don't know.
Yeah, it's worth it to them, because it's 50% reduction in hauls. That's a big hit, when you got 20 or 30 trucks going out, two loads a day. Okay?
I'll get it dropped.
Thank you very much. Okay, since Jake's not here, we're gonna do our final agenda item before lunch, and that's an executive session for Indigent and Charity, so I'd entertain a motion to go into executive session. 2061D, 74 2061D. These personnel, I think. D. So, go ahead, that motion? Did you make the motion? Do I have to sing it? Move the segment by roll call? As we're counting, Doug, we're in at 11:20. Welcome, Jody.
Hi, sorry.
Nice mask, did you make...